Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll call to order this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for March 5th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Just for the record, all five members, full regular members, are present. I think it's the first time we've all been together, so nice to see everyone. Welcome back. Commissioner Poyzon, you want to read petition number one into the record?
Which one is number one?
Seventy-five. Seventy-five, Fourth Avenue, excuse me, petition of Angel Lozano and Karen Sacon, seeking a coastal site plan review and variance of section 3.14 of the 55-foot and 75-foot required setback to a water body and coastal resource in order to install an in-ground swimming pool incidental to an existing single-family dwelling in an RS4 zone. The hardship is the contour of the property.
Good evening, Mr. Proto.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. DeSillo, commissioners. It's good to be in front of you for the first time, hopefully not the last. For the record, my name is Benjamin Proto. I'm an attorney at 2885 Main Street in Stratford. I represent the petitioners. We appreciate your time this evening. We're going to try not to take up too much of your time. The petitioners are seeking a waiver in order to install an in-ground pool at their property. For those of you who are not familiar with Fourth Avenue, Fourth Avenue is a dead-end street, for the most part, in lordship, and this property is the last house on the right-hand side going down the street. It is adjacent to vacant land, which has a small pond and a sort of a stream that comes off the pond that runs up Fourth and Fifth Avenue, and a small part of that stream crosses the applicant's property. The applicant is seeking to install an in-ground pool on the property. The pool would be located to the vacant side, the vacant lot side of the property, away from the house to, if you're facing the house, to the right side of the property. The setback is less than required under the regulation, and there's, the primary reason for that is if you look at the property and you look at the slope of the property and the grade of the property, you'll see to the upper part of the property, the slope at that point is about just over seven feet, and at the location of the pool is just under, just about six feet or so. And so the property has a large contour, so there's a large berm in the back, there's a berm to the side, the vacant lot side of the property. So as such, a couple of things happen here. One, it's really one of the few places we can put the pool that doesn't put the pool next to the neighbor's property, so we're trying to keep this away from the neighbor's property as much as we can, and we've put it as far over to the non, what I call the vacant lot side of the property to keep it away from the neighbor's property, to try to reduce any noise that may come from that. Secondly, it's in a location where the impact to the wetland is negligible in that anything that would happen would have to go up a hill and then go down a hill to get to the stream, or up a hill and then down a hill to get toward the lake area. So we think this is the best location for the pool, however, it is not, it is slightly less set by the regulations. Again, it, we believe it's the best location for the neighbors, the best location for the property owner, and the best location to protect the wetlands from any possible contamination, from anything that may come from the pool, or the installation of the pool. There are a couple of you have received, and just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I provided Ms. Wheelie with, because of mailing to the neighbors. Couple of issues that have come up from the neighbors. One is, and the neighbor, the Wetmore property to the right of the property, there is a concern about the location, as shown on the plan, of the proposed pool equipment is to, is very close to the neighbor's property. My client is willing to move that to the other side of the house to neighbor, and again, to reduce the amount of noise that would be associated with the pool, the pool equipment, the filtering equipment, the electrical equipment that will be there. Issue that you've probably heard of is from the neighbor behind is the lighting issue. He's concerned about light shining into his house. My client is very aware of that and are willing to install lighting that is shielded downward, and so it doesn't project out and, excuse me, just illuminates the pool area. And again, we would take these conditions of approval. The third thing I believe you heard from Mr. Cummings regarding some concrete blocks that are located on the property. Those concrete blocks are there. My client tells me that those blocks will be used in the construction of the pool, and when the pool is done, those will be part of the pool construction to hold the rebar. The pool will be made of concrete, so they'll be used to hold the rebar. They will be gone. Whatever blocks are not used will be removed from the property once the construction is done. Those are the immediate issues that come to mind, but I think the best thing, Mr. Chairman, is to answer any questions that members may have regarding the pool and the location.
Certainly. Questions from members? Ms. Wheelie?
Yeah, to know about the, it says in order to grant access to the, well, your microphone.
Yeah.
It, recommendations that the board condition any coastal site plan approval for the resource variance, what they requirement, sedimentation and erosion controls be properly installed, regularly inspected and properly maintained.
Those are normally conditions of approval, I would imagine, and we have no issues with that.
I'm not sure exactly what that is.
So I think during construction, and Mr. Brennan can help us with this, but during construction, we would install the appropriate soil and erosion controls and sediment controls, again, to protect the wets, although getting anything to those wets would be extremely difficult, given the grade, but probably silt fencing or hay bales to protect around. So once the construction is done, those would be removed, but I think it's predominantly for during the construction of the pool to protect the various wetlands in the area. Silt fencing, hay bales, I don't know what else we could use there.
Attorney Proto's exactly right. It's to prevent any runoff of soil materials onto budding properties from the wetland area, so during construction, there's a temporary barrier, in a sense, that's installed to prevent these, any, any sort of runoff.
So that's just during?
It's prior, prior to construction and during.
Okay, regularly inspected and properly maintained, but that means just during the construction?
Correct.
Not, just as a permanent?
Once, once the construction is complete and the property's inspected, those items can be removed. They're temporary.
And those, that's normally, I believe, a condition of approval, and we have no issue with that.
Okay.
Going ones?
Anybody else? Just, the only question I just want to bring up is, I understand pretty much what they're going for. I do have a question regarding the rules that we're, we're dealing with, because it does appear that, under the regulations, that there cannot be any activity within 50 feet. So just, could you walk me through the statutory, how this works? Because I have a hard time, I couldn't quite, quite get whether this was an allowed item that we were doing, or just granting a variance. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what our legal situation is.
You're granting a variance to the regulation, the 50-foot setback. I believe we're looking to go, I'd have to look at the map, it's, I think, 37 feet.
Thirty, yeah, something like that.
And again, it's a waiver of your regulation of, on the 50-foot setback, and obviously the only way that you can grant the waiver is to find the hardship associated with the property, and we believe that hardship comes from the contour and grading of the property, such that there's really, really only two places that this pool can go. One is where we've proposed to put it, the other is very close to the neighbor's property, which we don't want to do. The neighbor doesn't want it there, we don't want to disturb the neighbor, so we've took the, taken the lesser intrusive location for the pool to reduce the spillage, shall we say, to the neighbor, noise, sound, whatever it might be, to take it as far away from the neighbor as we could on the property, and do what we can to protect the wets that are in our area and that run along our property, using both the natural boundaries and the natural protections that exist through the berm and the grading, and our protections that we're going to be required to do during construction. I think at the end of the day, it makes sense to put it where it is, to protect the neighbors as best we can, protect the wets as best we can, and provide the applicant with the ability to install the pool.
Okay, makes sense. Mr. Carroll?
Regarding Mr. Sulehavi's original question regarding legality of the 50 feet, is this something maybe, Mr. Brennan, is this a Stratford rule, or is this a state mandated 50?
This is definitely a Stratford rule. I haven't really seen other towns imply this. It's, it's really an added buffer after a view, a review from a coastal site plan or from an inland wetlands approval. So it's kind of an added buffer in that sense, but this is Stratford rule.
And just so we're clear, Mr. Carroll, these are not inlands, these are titles?
Yes.
Which is why Kelly has signed off, and we had to go to deep.
Thank you.
Okay. And just, could you just repeat? I, I know you said it, and I just didn't get it into my notes, because I want to make sure I have it down for when we go to discuss this on the record. The situation with the lighting, again, we had the commentary that was provided here that the light was going to be shining there. Did you, how are we going to address that? Just want to make sure I get it down.
Sure. So the concern from the neighbor behind is the lighting, and because he's directly behind, he, I think he's concerned, or rightly concerned, in that any lighting that is installed either on the house, he says no stadium lighting, and we're obviously not going to build light posts and put things in, that would need, require a whole other variance. So the lighting would probably be located on the house as, and that that lighting be directed downward towards the pool, away from his house and his bedroom, which I believe is on the backside of his house, and we would suggest that there be some, some shielding to that, to ensure the downward move, the downward beam of the light, and also to ensure that the light remains on our property and doesn't intrude onto the neighboring property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Poyzon?
Just a follow-up on that. So the, if the lighting is LED lights, it's a lot easier to do all those things you just said. Lights going to be LED?
I would imagine they would be, as they're the most efficient.
Yeah.
And I, it's pretty hard to find non-LED lighting today.
The questions from members, just a reminder, we have to ask any questions of Attorney Proto now, as opposed to when we go into our administrative session, so if you have even an inkling of something you want to ask, now's the time. Ms. Wheelie?
I would just like to understand these references to FEMA compliant. It seems to be saying that the steps of the house do not appear to be FEMA compliant, since they are not a flow-through design, and, you know, I didn't know what we'd have to consider with that.
I'm going to refer that over to Dan, but I, I think, just briefly, I'll kind of start it, and I'll let Dan kind of finish it, because neither Dan or I were involved in that application. So my understanding is that when the application was filed to, for the house, to build the house, that for whatever reason, and I don't have an answer, and I don't think Dan has an answer, no CAM was required or filed with this application, which should have been, because it's in a coastal area, management area. As a result, the approval for the property and the structure was an approval that should have had some additional elements to it, shall we say, which were not in the design and were not built into design, as they were not required. And from there, that point, I think Dan has the ending to the story, or at least the middle part of this, the second act of the three-act story that we're in.
Yeah, so we have a couple different reviews in the staff comments. One by myself, one by Deep, which reviews the coastal site plan approval. We also have an additional one by our Health Department, along with the EPA, regarding any sort of contaminants, Raymark contaminants on the site. As per the Deep comments, when they're talking about a FEMA-compliant pool, it's basically, they are looking that the pool is built as close to grade as possible. So any storm surge that comes in, there's no sort of retaining wall or buffer to stop any of that water traveling through that area. In regards to the existing home, that is being worked out between our, our department, floodplain manager, and Deep as well. And if there's any questions or concerns regarding any Raymark contamination, we do have Olivia Coleman and Jim DiLorenzo from EPA and Health Department to address any of those concerns.
Yeah, I would like to, to hear about that, because it sounds like at different spots on the property, there's different depths of the contaminants, and just wondering, you know, an in-ground pool, you're going to be digging into the ground. I mean, do they really know exactly how?
Right. I, I would defer those answers to our professionals.
If our two guests could join us for a few minutes, it's not so much for the, the variance piece, but I think we actually do have to do a, we have to do a CAM on this, right? Or we have, yeah, we do a CAM on there, so I think that'd be helpful for our consideration, if you wouldn't mind just approaching, give us your name, address, and just a brief overview of your, any findings or recommendations that the board should take under consideration.
My name is Jim DiLorenzo. I work for the Region One office of the Environmental Protection Agency out of Boston, Massachusetts. I manage the Raymark cleanup here in Stratford. This property was one of 47, where Raymark waste was removed in the early 1990s. Based on the available data, the property was excavated to a depth of seven to eight feet from the street back. As it approached the wetland area, that excavation was reduced down to five to three feet. Where they are citing the pool appears to be in an area where the seven-to-eight-foot excavation was conducted. We plan next Wednesday to sample the area, because of the 30-year-old age of the data, just to confirm that they're not going to be excavating into Raymark waste, and so that'll happen next Wednesday. So right now, based on the available information, the pool appears to be cited in an appropriate area of the yard, based on what we know about the remaining Raymark waste.
So no concerns if they had to go dig, pending your final evaluation of the property, no other concerns that they would be disturbing anything that's been kept, or?
Not at this time. We'll confirm that next Wednesday. We'll have data available next Wednesday, and if any slight adjustments to the pool location or depth are needed, we would hope to work with the petitioner to make those adjustments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the gentlemen?
Thank you.
I think I answered the, yeah, I just, I'm Olivia Coleman with the Stratford Health Department, and we maintain all the Raymark data on file, and make sure that if there is a proposal for any of these properties, you know, this data and the contamination on site doesn't mean that you can't do anything, it just means that we need to work with the applicant to make sure that they're doing anything, any work safely, and if they do have to disturb the material that it's managed safely, and that the health and engineering controls are in place to prevent any other workers or anyone from being exposed. But right now, it sounds like, based on the location of the pool, and they are going to mark out the location of the pool in advance of the sampling, so we know exactly where it's going to be. Based on that sampling, we'll know if we need to take any measures, but it sounds like right now, there's no concern for anything being disturbed during the work.
So there, I mean, there is like a, some kind of a map or whatever of the property and how, what the depth is of the contamination?
Yes.
In various places on the property?
Yes, so the property was excavated in grids, and there's a map showing all the different grid numbers, and it says to what depth that excavation was.
I saw that, I was kind of confused by that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's confusing, and it's, it's a little bit hard to tell, you know, because it's so old, and there wasn't GIS at the time, you know, exactly where the grids are. We have an idea of how big each grid is and how far from the house, but that's why EPA is doing this additional sampling, just to make sure before any digging is performed.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
If there's any additional questions, Mr. Chairman, obviously, we're happy to answer them.
Okay. Anybody? Okay, we'll take a public comment, and then if anything comes up, we'll give you the chance to respond. Anybody wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone in opposition? For the record, we did have written communication, which I believe has been shared by, through all members. One was from, and they've been referenced by the petitioner, Mark Cummings. "I have no objection to the pool being installed, but I would like the patio blocks removed and the embankment while the work is being done." That was from 75th Avenue. We also had a communication from David Wetmore, writing regarding the installation of a ground swing pool at 75 Fourth Ave. "No objection to the pool and the sheds, concerned about the installation of the stadium lighting, as it was mentioned shines into his home. If any lights just shine down the proprietor's own yard, I would have no objection." And then there's one more from, I'm not sure, is this also from Dave Wetmore?
Yeah.
Okay, the reference to Chevy Chase, okay. Okay, I believe we got those out of the way. So if there's no other questions, no other comments, we'll take a motion to close this petition.
So moved.
My Mr. Poyzon, is there a second? My Mr. Carroll, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Mr. Carroll, could you read petition number two for us, please?
Thank you.
Number 2325 Elm Street, petition of Armander and, please excuse me if I'm getting the names wrong, Rangita Batra, seeking a site plan review and variance of the overall lot coverage from the requested 25% to 27.7% in order to construct a front porch and garage overhang incidental to a single-family dwelling located in an RS4 zone. Hardship being size, location, and lot orientation.
Thank you, sir. Before we hear the petition, I'm in receipt of a communication from Attorney Florick that we need to address before we hear it. It says, "Mr. Chairman, section 8.6 of the statute states that where a variance application has been denied, the BZA shall not be required to hear a petition for the same variance or for substantially the same variance less than six months from the time of denial." The statute does not say that the ZBA cannot hear it, it just says that it is not required to hear it. Section F, subsection 1, subsection G of the BZA's rules state that the Board of Zoning Appeals shall not, emphasis added, hear any application asking for the same variance and related to the same area of the lot more than once in a period of six months from the previous decision. However, that same section allows for a waiver of that prohibition by the BZA. Section G, subsection 1, subsection A, provides that for such a waiver, a two-thirds majority of the board, or four votes, is necessary. Thus, a formal vote of the board will be necessary as the initial step in hearing the application, and four members of the board must vote in favor of the waiver, or it cannot be heard again for six months. So as members will recall, we heard this initially in January, and it, the motion to grant the waiver, or the, the variance failed. It has now been resubmitted with what I believe is to be new information regarding actually declaring a, a type of hardship. So if it is the will of the commission to hear this petition tonight, I would need a motion to that effect, and it would require four votes for passage.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Poyzon to hear the petition. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lynch. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five votes in favor. We will hear the petition. Good evening, Mr. Knott.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, Madam Secretary, ladies, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with Offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. I'm here on behalf of Armando and Rangita Batra, who live at 80 Salem Road, Trumbull, Connecticut. They are the owners of the house under construction at 2523, 2325 Elm Street. This time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing, and a photo of the posted sign as required by law. This is an application for variance of lot coverage from 25% to 27.7%. As you indicated, this application sounds familiar to use, because you heard it at your meeting on January 2nd, at which time the application was denied for lack of a valid hardship. This variance is needed in order that your homeowner could increase the depth of his front porch from five feet to six feet, and extend the porch across the front of the house. His intention in doing so was to provide a comfortable location for his parents to use the front porch. Your decision in January was the correct decision. I say that because the application was presented by the owner of the house, who did not understand the law as it relates to the granting of variances. The applicant stated at that time that the hardship was, quote, "the health and safety of elderly parents." Well, that may be true, but the health and safety of elderly parents is not a valid reason for granting a variance. The hardship has to do with the land, not the health of a, of an owner's parents. That's not a valid reason. So you denied it, and you were corrected to deny it. I met with the applicant shortly after the January meeting, because he didn't know what was going on, he was confused and upset and all that stuff. At that meeting, I explained to him that the board was correct in denying the application, because his hardship was not a valid hardship under Connecticut law. At that meeting, I reviewed his application, the house plans, and their proposed site plan. In reviewing his plans, I realized that he did have a valid hardship, unrelated to his parents' health and safety. At that point, I contacted Dan to see if the board would consider an immediate resubmital of the application based upon a different, and what I consider to be valid hardship. Dan spoke to Chris, Chris spoke to John Florick. The opinion was just read to you, the town attorney's opinion, and you just voted to allow me to proceed. Because this application makes reference to what I consider to be a valid hardship, rather than the invalid hardship was presented to you in January, it's appropriate for me to proceed tonight. It's a different application. The relief sought is the same relief, but the reasons, therefore, are different, okay? The hardship I'm claiming here is the size, location, and neighborhood orientation of the lot, and the unusually wide grass area within this, within the street wide of, excuse me, within the street right-of-way, which increases the effective area of the applicant's setback from the street. I am prepared to provide detailed evidence regarding this proposed hardship. Exhibits one and two are photographs of the applicant's house currently under construction, one taken from one side, the other taken from the other side. You can see it's a large, beautiful house. Now, you can see from exhibit two, there is a slight setback where the garage protrudes from the front of the house, four or five feet, and it's in that setback where the porch is going to go. That's where the porch is going to go. Exhibit three is an aerial photograph of- Exhibit three is an aerial photograph of, from the assessor's records, which is the area, which is, which is the lot upon which this house is being built. I've marked an X on the lot where the house is being built. You can see there's no house there when this photo was taken. It also shows a large strip of vacant land between the front property line, highlighted in yellow, and the paved portion of the street. That blue area that I have highlighted on this exhibit is the area in the town right-of-way, which is the grass setback from the street to the front property line. As you can see, it's a fairly extensive setback. Exhibit four is a copy of the site plan submitted to the board of this application, upon which I have indicated the distance between the front lot line of my client's property and the paved portion of the road. And I have indicated on this site plan the depth of the grass strip between the road and the front property line. And that depth ranges between twenty-eight feet and thirty-one feet. In other words, there is a thirty-one strip between, thirty-one foot strip, thirty-foot strip between the paved portion of the road and my guy's front property line. Exhibit five is a topographic ma- map from the town's engineering department, in which I have highlighted the applicant's lot in pink, and the large grass strip that you just saw on the previous exhibit, between his lot and the Elm Street right-of-way, in which I've highlighted in yellow. So you see Elm Street is highlighted in blue within the street right-of-way, and then his lot is in pink, and then there's that thirty-foot strip between the paved portion of Elm Street and the lot. Also on this map, you will see that I've also highlighted in yellow the grass strips in front of the houses on East Broadway, Warwick Avenue, and Judson Place. You can see from these outlines that the grass strip between the front of these lots and the streets, on, on, the front of the lots and those streets and the street itself is very narrow, and completely unlike the grass strip in front of my client's property. And when you drive around Stratford, by the way, you're gonna see grass strips between the sidewalk and the street, four or five feet, maybe? And then you got the sidewalk, another four or five feet. So it's typically between the edge of the road and the front property line, it's like ten feet, typically. This one is thirty-one feet, all right? Exhibits six, seven, and eight are photographs of the, this particular property. Exhibit six shows the grass area between East Broadway on Elm Street, heading towards my client's property. And as you can see, as you, as you are coming from East Broadway, the grass area is relatively narrow, and it gets wider as you head south on Elm Street towards my client's property. Exhibit seven follows that same grass strip as it heads south on Elm Street towards my client's front yard. The tree in the distance, way in the distance that's surrounded by that blue fence, is actually in front of my client's property. Exhibit eight, and, and the purpose of this exhibit is to see that the grass area is getting bigger, wider, as you go towards my client's property. Exhibit eight is the grass area in front of my client's house. As shown on Exhibit four, that rare, grass area varies in depth between twenty-eight feet and thirty-one feet. You can see it's quite wide, and this is directly in front of my client's property. Now Exhibit nine is a photo of East Broadway, as you're heading from Elm Street down towards Stratford Center. And I took this picture just to show that the immediate area has these narrow strips, four or five feet of grass, then the sidewalk, so you're looking at ten, eleven feet, as opposed to the thirty feet in front of my client's property. This grass area that you see in Exhibit nine is typical of the, uh, grass areas all around the neighborhood, as shown in Exhibit five, and all around Stratford, for that matter. Exhibit ten is a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic District Commission. This property is located in a historic district. They appeared before the historic district showed them their plans, and got a certificate of approval from the historic district. And finally, Exhibits eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are letters from neighbors in support of this application. Now, I want to reference Dan's administrative comments dated February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. In those comments, he states that the proposed front porch addition and garage overhang is consistent with the, in character for the type of development in the surrounding neighborhood. It appears that there will be minimal adverse impact on the surrounding area. The authority to grant a variance may only be used with respect to a parcel of land having unusual conditions not generally encountered within the zoning district. And that's what we have here, we have an unusual circumstance not generally encountered within the zoning district. Based upon these exhibits, I believe that I have shown you that such an unusual condition exists. The point is this, you could not approve this variance application in January, there was no valid hardship at that time. With the evidence that is placed before you tonight, you can see that an unusual circumstance does exist with respect to that wide strip. With this evidence before you, you can approve this variance tonight, if you want to. Now we have a hardship, if you want to approve the variance, you're legally entitled to approve the variance. And I ask you to do so. It's a beautiful house, the Historic District Commission likes it, the neighbors like it, it's the right thing to do, and I ask you to approve this application. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, questions for Attorney Knott? Members? I guess it seems straight, pretty straightforward. Could you just go through, so we're still at twenty-seven point seven percent of the property?
Yeah, correct.
And when they do that calculation, do they incorporate the, the, the land beyond the sidewalk, or is?
No, 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 no. Strictly the lot, the land within the lot. And it's basically the difference, that difference is the difference between a six-by-six front step, six-by-six, and a, and a six-by-thirty front porch, where the old folks can sit. I mean, the, the reason why they want to do the porch hasn't changed.
No, I understand that.
The only difference is, we have a legitimate reason for granting a variance now.
Okay. Okay, any last chance, any questions for Mr. Knott? Okay.
Thank you.
There's not many people in the audience, but I have to ask anyway, are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor of the petition? We do have letters of support here from Christine Rudney of Twenty-three Thirty Elm, and Carol Profeta of Twenty-three Thirty-five Elm, and Jacqueline Sullivan of, there's a phone number, but not an address, and then Jose Valera. Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? If not, we'll take a motion to close the petition.
So moved.
Is there, by Mr. Poyzon, is there a second? By Ms. Swiele, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Petition number three, do we have to read it and then defer it? I see Five Hundred Sniffin's Lane?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It will be your, possible.
Okay, Five Hundred Sniffin's Lane will be continued, and Thirty Ferry Boulevard, we do not need to hear either?
That has been thrown the issue.
Very good. Okay, so, there being no further petitions, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Poyzon, second. Mr. Carroll, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Public hearing is concluded at seven thirty-eight PM. We'll move right now onto our agenda. First word of business on our agenda is the special organizational meeting item for the motion, or to elect a vice chair. We were unable to do that at our last meeting, so the chair will open the floor for nominations for vice chair. Anybody want to make a motion?
Are there?
Yes, Ms. Swiele.
Everything was discarded from the, from the last time? Because I had nominated Andrea Lynch.
We, the, since we were unable to
Complete.
Complete that vote, I'll ask for nominations again.
Okay. Yes, I nominate Andrea Lynch.
Okay, the name of Andrea Lynch has been nominated, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lynch, is any further nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate myself.
Mr. Poyzon has nominated Mr. Poyzon, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Carroll. Two candidates' names have been placed in nomination, Ms. Lynch and Mr. Poyzon. We'll proceed to a roll call vote for election of a vice chair. Ms. Swiele.
Andrea Lynch, and I want to thank her for sending us information about herself, so that we would, those of us, including myself, who don't know, or at least got a little bit of information.
Very good. Ms. Lynch.
I would like to be vice chairman, because I lived in this community for a long time, and both my children lived here, attended our school, Franklin, and I am intrigued of learning and continue to learn about the ZBA. I appreciate it, thank you.
And I take it you vote for yourself, correct?
I vote for myself.
Okay, very good, just wanted to make sure. Mr. Poyzon? No? I go by district, so.
I thought we were going.
Yeah.
Chris sent out all the information and talked about my background at prior meetings. I'll vote for myself, thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
I would like to place my vote for Mr. Poyzon.
Okay, and the chair also votes for Mr. Poyzon, they're both ex, you're both excellent candidates, and I'm really looking forward to working with both of you. However, I would appreciate Mr. Poyzon's experience, so with that, that's three votes for Mr. Poyzon, two votes for Ms. Lynch, and Mr. Poyzon is elected as vice chair. Congratulations, and thank you both for putting your names forward.
Thank you.
Moving forward into the administrative session, items listed on the public hearing agenda for March fifth. The first one is Seventy-five Fourth Avenue, take a motion to take it off the table.
So moved.
Mr. Carroll, is there a second?
Yes, me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Poyzon. Okay, all in favor of taking it off the table, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Yeah, Carroll and Poyzon. Okay.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I don't quite understand that. Is it because things still have to be
It is, it has been the, the practice of the land use boards that we hear things for, for public hearing, which is technically a separate meeting, but then when we want to take them up for discussion, we actually have to bring them up for discussion, so it's a procedural vote to initiate the discussion process.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so, it's off the table, it's open for discussion or motions, so what is your pleasure, commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Poyzon, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lynch, discussion. And I will remind members that you'll find it in Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Sullivan's package. There is a, sort of a process we have to walk through in order to approve it, or stating the different criteria that it meets, it's not just a simple yes or no, so let's have some discussion and make sure that we, we can meet the criteria required, okay? Anybody want to take a stab at it to start?
I will, Mr. Commissioner.
Go ahead, Mr. Carroll.
I guess the issue that I'm most concerned about is the environmental impact on, on it. You know, that being that the house itself is non-compliant, you know, I don't know if it's the right thing for us to do to approve something non-compliant on a property that's already non-compliant. I guess that's the, kind of the struggle I'm having with the decision.
Okay. I'm not sure if that, that, let me just, just find this, I've got too many documents here, I'm gonna have to build up like a card that has the, okay, here we go. Let me just read through it so that we understand, frame exactly where we're going with this. So it says, "Before making such determination or variance, the Board of Zoning Appeals must make a written finding," in this case, we'll make it written, "but has to be at least verbally stated, in the minutes of each case, giving the detail, one, the special circumstances which create the hardship for the particular parcel of land and which do not apply to other parcels in the district, B, that the hardship did not exist when the applicant became interested party and was not created by any act of the applicant, and C, that the variance allowed was the minimum necessary to relieve the hardship." So those are sort of the points that we have to come to a conclusion on as we deliberate. Okay? So I, I'll start off with number one, at least from the testimony that we heard here tonight, the special circumstance that was being discussed was the, the contour of the property, it proximity to the pond, wetland, whatever you want to call it, tidal water body of water, and the slope gradient of the property in relationship to, close proximity to other neighbors in the area. Yes, Ms. Lynch?
I have a question.
Certainly.
Do, do, is that area flooded? Like a flooded area? Because you got the pond, he's got two, two waters on two sides. Is that a flooded area?
You want to grab that one?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can't tell from personal experience, but I do believe the pond, which is a couple parcels down, definitely rises during, during some storm surge. That little brook towards the back
Yeah.
Actually acts as almost a relief, as, as it travels up during, during a storm surge, there, there's a town inlet-outlet pipe that lets the water travel up. It doesn't, I don't know exactly how far it goes, but it's just to hold the water, and as the storm recedes, that water comes back down towards the pond.
Okay.
So I do believe there is some minor, minor flooding from time to time.
Okay. Because I was thinking of what, what's your name?
Michael.
Michael was trying to, I hear his point, because the house, it's on a land, and the flooding of the water comes back down, so, yeah, that's kind of tricky to me. I'm just worried about the water and the amount of weight of the pool, even though it's concrete.
Yeah, well, pools are typically designed to have water. That's why, you know, during wintertime, most pools aren't fully drained, there, there's a certain amount that's supposed to be kept in. So even if a pool was, was to, let's say, overflow from a storm surge, that the concrete, in this case, will be able to support that, should be able to support that extra weight.
I've had a neighbor, his pool did burst in his backyard. So I, I've, I've seen it, like, not happened, but it happened. Yeah.
Other members have discussion points? We, um, let me, I'll just, I'll just give you my opinions on these. We already talked about the first one, about the, uh, the contour of the land, and it seems like, at least from the discussion that we had here today, that this is going to be the best way to approach it, considering the unique characteristics of the land regarding the, the water protection of the interests of the neighbor, and, and obviously, we're waiting to see what happens with, you know, any environmental impact there. It's not a self-created hardship, they didn't put the pond in, so that's usually an easy one. And it, it appears that, at least, it says the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve the hardship. At least from my opinion, it does appear that it is that way, there are lots of swimming pools in, in that particular area, even though it's closely proximity to the beach, it's not unique in that way, and it does not appear that this would cause any adverse effects in my mind, to any of the other neighbors there, or any, create any, any massive change. It's kind of unique, it's not a huge pond, so it's not like we're talking about like fresh pond or something that's big, that it might have an impact on a lot of different properties. So at least from, from my mind, this does meet the, the variance criteria there, certainly open to anybody's decisions, but that's just the, sort of where I'm seeing this come down in my evaluation.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you, I think it meets all three of those also.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I as well, I have no issue with the, with it, as, my, more of my concern was just through the FEMA and those regulations there, but I think it appears that we've met, or they are working toward that, and final approval won't be given until that's resolved, anyway, so.
And just procedurally, help me out here, so the conditions that were laid out here, would that be something that we incorporate when we go to the CAM piece of this later on in the meeting, or? would that be something that we incorporate when we go to the CAM piece of this later on in the meeting, or?
Uh, I believe they can be done either for the CAM only, for the ZBA only, for the variance, or it can be done for both.
Okay, Mr. Flor.
Yes, I, I agree with that, Mr. Chairman. If you, uh, if, if, in, in granting the variance, you want those conditions imposed that were reflected in the staff comments and the EPA comments, and in what we heard tonight, the lighting and, and the other conditions, I would make them, uh, probably in both, both the variance proposal and the CAM proposal.
Okay, very good. So, hmm. Okay, so, as I have it written down here, and, folks, keep me honest here, if I didn't get them down here, everything here. Let's see here, I have the lighting would be moved downward away from the house and the bedroom of the neighbor's house. Shielding would be installed in there, and LED lights would be, would be used. The material that was identified as being on the property would also be removed after construction. And this would all be pending, um, successful evaluation by the environmental authorities and health authorities that are looking at that. Does that cover everything?
That is correct.
So.
You got that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would recommend, um, you know, a condition that, um, the pool construction be in compliance with the EPA and FEMA recommendations. That soil and erosion and sediment controls are installed prior to construction and inspected by the zoning enforcement officer. And I think that's it.
Mr. Chairman, to be even more specific than Mr. Brennan, if I read the EPA recommendations right, it talked about excavation being, um, leaving at least a one-foot buffer from where the contamination was found to the, to the end of that excavation.
Okay, that's a lot of conditions and to do verbally.
Well, I think if, if there's going to be a motion to approve the variance in a second, I think the motion can simply be to approve, uh, and to add as conditions those conditions which were verbalized by, uh, by, by the chairman.
And we can go and take, look and, look at the tape.
That is correct.
To get it resolved, so. Okay, I'll tell you what, I will make a motion to amend the approval, if we can, to win, to make it subject to all of the conditions that were enumerated, um, by myself, the town attorney, and the zoning enforcement officer during this meeting, so that it's all incorporated into one final recommend, letter of recommendation. Can I have a second to that, if that'd be okay? Mr. Carroll? Okay. Any discussion or any additional changes, conditions you want to make? Okay, let's just vote on the amendment for now. So all in favor of the amendment, say aye? Opposed, no? Okay, the amendment carries. We're still in discussion on the motion for the variance. Is there any further discussion or questions? Okay. If not, we'll go to a roll call vote, takes four votes for passage. Ms. Sweeley?
I would approve.
Okay, Ms. Lynch?
Approve.
Mr. Poyzon?
Approve.
Mr. Carroll?
I approve.
And the chair votes yes, so that's five in favor, none in opposition. The motion as amended passes. Okay. Moving on to twenty-three twenty-five Elm Street. What's your pleasure, commissioners? Want to approve, deny, what's your favor?
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, actually.
Make a motion to take it off the table first.
There you go, see, I got tripped up myself. Motion by Mr. Poyzon to take it off the table, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Lynch, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously, it's open for discussion and for your actions.
Now, now a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Now a motion to approve by Mr. Poyzon. Is there a second to the motion to approve by Ms. Sweeley? Discussion members? Go ahead, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Mayor.
As far as the, I guess I'm having a little bit of difficulty understanding the hardship in the, because the, the size of the lot has not changed. However, uh, to Mr. Knott's point, uh, I believe that it is a, a special condition there, and being in the fact that they do have approval from the Historic District Commission, they do have approval from all the adjoining neighbors, I'm inclined to, uh, I would, I, I don't necessarily have an issue with this, I, I can't find an issue with this at this point.
Further discussion? Anybody want to talk? Okay, let's go through the, um, let's go through the criteria again. So I, I think we, your points, Mr. Carroll, speak to item, or the first part of the checklist, which was, it's a, a unique circumstance to the land. The, one point that I, I think I will say Mr. Knott spoke eloquently about is the, how it differs from the, the other, the other parcels of land in the area. He's right, they have that big sort of lip that sort of juts out onto the street, which I hadn't noticed, uh, when we looked at it in January. And it, and it creates sort of the illusion, if you will, that the property is actually bigger and deeper than it is. So it's less of a, um, yeah, I, I think one of the reasons that we do, um, you know, the percentage of property coverage is to make sure that you don't have something that looks so much bigger and it's overlapping the property in here, where you're, I don't think you're going to get that particular effect because of that additional large frontage that you have on that. And it's, it is, and I, I know I had voted no on this the last time it came before us in January because of the hardship. It does seem to be generally accepted by the, um, people in the neighborhood. It's really not a huge variance. Although that's not the criteria, but the criteria, now that we actually have a valid, at least in my mind, a valid special circumstance, at least we can get that way. They did not create this by themselves, it does not appear. And it does appear that this is a relatively small, uh, change that, uh, it's the minimum necessary to relieve, to relieve the hardship, and it actually makes the property work a little bit better, so I'm actually leaning towards approval, but I certainly want to hear other members' concerns and any conditions that we might particularly have on this. Anybody else want to speak? Everybody's quiet tonight. Okay. If not, let's go to a vote. Ms. Sweeley?
Uh, approve.
Ms. Lynch?
Approve.
Mr. Poyzon?
Approve.
Mr. Carroll?
Approve.
And the chair votes yes to approve, that's five yeses, none in opposition, so the variance is approved. Okay, moving on. Approval of the minutes of our February meeting, if I could find my agenda, which I've misplaced already. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the February sixth meeting?
So moved.
By Mr. Poyzon, second by Ms. Sweeley, any discussions, corrections? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Okay, CAM site, uh, plan review, again, back to the same property in question, seventy-five Fourth Avenue. Why don't you walk us through it, because it's probably the first time a lot of these members have done a CAM site review, so we'll just, this would help guide our discussion, if you don't mind, Mr. Brennan.
So, coastal site plan review, um, for any property is referred to DEEP. With their recommendations regarding the pool, they just recommended it, that it be built to FEMA compliance. That generally just means that there's no obstructions at the lip of the pool to prevent any storm surge from proceeding in the direction it's traveling. The applicant appears to show that it's, the construction of the pool is going to be compliant at the lowest grade of the property. So we recommend approving. I would also recommend while, uh, in the approval session, to condition it with the same conditions the variance was approved with.
Very good. Okay, can we have a motion to approve with the same stipulations and conditions as made in the variance approval?
So moved.
Same by Mr. Poyzon, is there a second? A second by Mr. Carroll, any further discussion or questions on this? I know we've discussed it pretty extensively. Covered the erosion, the pool construction, lighting, approval of, uh, and everything to EPA standards, and so I'm just rehashing what we discussed about.
I, I might add one condition that
Certainly, sir.
It looks like I forgot to write down as well, that the pool equipment be moved from one side to the other side.
Good point. Yeah, I wrote down will be moved, and I forgot to put in what it was, so. Okay, we'll add that in as a stipulation as well. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Any members' concerns, comments, other items, things keeping you up at night? I have a lot keeping me up at night, but we don't have enough time to talk about them here. Yeah, where do you want to start? Yeah, none of them are land use related, I assure you of that. Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for April second, twenty twenty-four. Certainly, if anything comes up, um, that requires your attention beforehand, we'll certainly let you know. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Mr. Poyzon, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lynch, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously, we're adjourned at eight oh one PM, have a good night, everybody.